Attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good afternoon, and thank you for joining us today as the National Board of Public Health Examiners presents the second in our series of five webinars geared to explaining the Certified in Public Health credential and to help you prepare for the upcoming exam. Each of our sessions will be two and a half to three hours long and include lectures and interactive segments. You may register for the remaining three sessions on biostatistics, environmental health, and behavioral and social sciences on the NBPHE website. Today, we are happy to present an epidemiology webinar. Pleased to have Dr. Paul Terry, Associate Professor at the Department of Public Health and Surgery from the College of Education, Health and Human Sciences at the University of Tennessee. Dr. Terry, thank you for joining us today.
Thank you very much. Again, my name is Paul Terry. I'm happy to be here. I wish everyone luck on their exam. This is a review of basic topics covered in the epidemiology section of the exam. And the materials covered, of course, cannot replace a basic epidemiology course. This is just a review. This review will be archived on the NBPHE website under Study Resources. So, a basic outline of what we'll be talking about. We'll be going through some definitions and terminology, measures of disease frequency, epidemiologic study design, and I'll have a few questions for you, a little quiz here and there on study designs, causation, how to judge whether an association is causal, and screening for disease. So first, the definition, basic definition of epidemiology is the study of distribution and determinants of health-related states or events in specified populations and the application of this study to control health problems. Now, you'll notice that the word "disease" is not in this particular definition. It used to be in older versions of epidemiology definitions, but, to be honest, we will use the term "disease" often because that's often what we're looking at as an outcome. And "health-related states or events" is a mouthful. But realize that when we talk about disease, it's not the only outcome that we can have in epidemiology. Even a cure is an outcome in epidemiology, and it's not a disease per se. It's an improvement. So be aware of the fact that people do use "disease" to mean, more generally, health-related states or events in specified populations. And "distribution" is highlighted because that's distinguished from "determinants." Determinants are more of what might cause a particular outcome. But "distribution" is more of a descriptive, it's part of descriptive epidemiology, and it brings up several basic questions. For example, how common is this disease?
Dr. Terry?
Yes?
This is Erin. I just want to interrupt you for just one moment. We are still seeing the title slide? I want to make sure that, if you've moved along, that we are progressing.
Yes, I have moved along, actually.
Okay.
So, I am now on a slide that talks about disease distribution. Are you not able to see that slide?
If we can advance to that slide, please.
Okay, hold on one moment. Some technical difficulties here. Let me do this real quick. I'm gonna change out, and I'm gonna re-switch it back to Dr. Terry.
All right.
Okay. Sorry about that. And you should be able to show now.
I will click Show My Screen.
Uh-huh.
And it says Attendees Still on Hold. Should I start broadcast?
Yep, good. It's already broadcasting, but...
Okay. So what screen do you see at this point?
Disease.
We are now on disease distribution.
Ah, good, thank you. And my apologies. Hopefully, we don't have any more glitches. So these are the...
I don't know.
Oh, yeah, it's no problem. Even movie theaters make mistakes once in a while. So, how common is the disease or outcome? Who is affected? When does it occur? Where does it occur? I mean, these are just basic questions about disease distribution. And you'll see, these questions lead to more questions. For example, is this a causal factor in this disease or outcome? So how common? So there are some basic terms you should be familiar with. Endemic: usual presence of a disease within a given population. Epidemic: occurrence of a disease clearly in excess of normal expectancy in a defined community or region. And pandemic: a worldwide epidemic. So where's the line between endemic and epidemic? For example, people refer to an epidemic of obesity in this country. At some point, at least the way we're viewed from other countries, we may be endemically obese here. So the dividing line between epidemic and endemic is not always clear. Now, when it comes to a rare or sporadic disease, there are definitions. For example, one definition says less than 200,000 people in the United States have, you know, less than 200,000 cases is a rare disease. But the problem with definitions is that you'll find that in some communities, it doesn't seem so rare, or in some points in time, it doesn't seem so rare. So I use the term "rare" a little bit carefully. Who is affected? So here are some descriptive epidemiology parameters for people. So these personal characteristics are not a complete list. They're just one of many, you know, things that disease can vary on. For example, age, and sex, race, ethnicity, education. When it comes to populations, membership can be permanent or transient. A population with a permanent membership is referred to as a fixed or closed population. For example, people experiencing a particular unique event, like the presence, being present in Hiroshima, or passengers on a particular airplane, or people enrolled in a specific cohort. If anyone knows of a specific cohort, like the Nurses Health Study, Physicians Health Study, Framingham Study, that's a closed cohort. A population with a transient membership is referred to as a dynamic or open cohort. For example, a population of Omaha. Even if year after year, the population seems to remain stable, certainly, some people are moving in and some people are moving out. That's why it's called a dynamic group or population or cohort. When does it occur? When does disease occur? Well, this is just one example. You can look at malaria, and you can look at the efforts that were made, and see if the efforts that were made to stem malaria are working over time. This is just one example of annual plague deaths in London. And it also reemphasizes the point I made about what's a rare disease. It's rare at some time, and it may not be rare at another time. Where does it occur? This is an example you should know about. It's the famous cholera cases in Golden Square area of London, where John Snow linked the Broad Street pump to cholera. And that was really a question of where are these cases occurring? They're occurring around the Broad Street pump. So now, some basic measures of morbidity. When we talk about mortality, you'll find that they're the same measures. Four simple mathematical parameters: counts, ratios, proportions, and rates. So we will distinguish these. A count is the most basic epidemiologic measure. It's basically one, two, three, you're counting. You're counting people. Answers the question, how many people have this disease? It's important to distinguish between incident and prevalent cases as we go through measures of frequency. So for counting, are we counting new cases or incident cases? Are we counting existing cases, which may be incident and prevalent? Basically, prevalent cases. So here's a basic count over time, deaths in the United States during the 20th century. You see, the death, the number of deaths is increasing. These are in thousands. The numbers of deaths are increasing over time. But does that mean it's more dangerous to live in the United States over time? Well, there's something obviously missing, and the count doesn't have it, and that's a denominator. How many people are in the denominator? How many people are at risk of dying, for example? So we get into ratios. Ratios have numerators on the top usually, and denominators on the bottom. So a ratio is one number divided by another, or X over Y. And the range of a ratio typically is zero to infinity. For example, if the denominator is zero, the ratio will be infinity. If the numerator is zero, the ratio will be zero. So X and Y may be related or completely independent. And this is an example of sex of children attending a clinic. So what's the ratio of males, females to males? If, you know, it could be three to one. For every male, three females come in. Now, this is also a ratio, females to all children. But you'll notice something different about it, and that is, the numerator, females, are contained in the denominator, all children. All children are made up of males and females. Females are part of that. So this is not a typical ratio. It's a type of ratio, proportion. Now, proportion is a ratio in which the numerator is included in the denominator, just like the example we just gave. And the range of this proportion, this type of ratio, is zero to one. For example, you can't have more than 100% female in any population, and you can't have less than 0% female in any population. So the range of a proportion is zero to one. And it's often expressed as a percentage. For example, among all children who attend a clinic, what proportion was female? A rate, generally speaking, is a quantity per unit of time. And you'll see it used as a synonym sometimes for a proportion, but it's not. A rate, generally speaking, is a quantity per unit of time. Here are some examples. The woman's heart rate was 60 beats per minute. The driver's rate of speed was 60 miles per hour. The man's pay rate was $60 per day. So you see that time is a part of the denominator. This is a count per unit of time, and that's how we're defining rate. For those of you who like formulas, it can be expressed as A over T, where A is the cases, number of cases, new cases actually, and T involves a component of time. And a rate actually varies from zero to infinity, and measures the speed at which things happen. In epidemiology, the speed at which disease occurs. Prevalence. Prevalence is a proportion. It's not a rate. There's no time component in the calculation. It measures the proportion of existing disease in the population at a given time. How many of you have a cold right now? Out of the total amount of people in the audience, how many of you have a cold? So it's a snapshot. It's not asking when you got your cold. It's whether you have a cold. It's existing disease. It's dimensionless, positive number, zero to one. And here's a basic formula, where number of existing cases divided by the total population. So incidence, as opposed to prevalence, measures the occurrence of new cases in a population at risk over time. And that can be measured as a proportion or a rate. Now that you know about proportions and rates, we can talk a little bit about the most common epidemiologic terms used to describe incidents. An incidence proportion is, well, I call it a risk, but it also goes by other names: incidence, cumulative incidence. It measures the probability or risk of developing disease during a period of observation. And it's a proportion, and so it ranges from zero to one. So here, basic formula, is risk is the number of new onset cases or events over the population at risk at the beginning of follow-up. So follow-up is when you observe a group of people over time to see what events occur in those people. So you must specify the time period of observation because risk changes with time. For example, a five-year period under which we're observing mortality or an incidence of disease will be less than a 10-year risk event. And that will be less than a 20-year risk event. And you also must specify the population because risk varies across populations. What's true in one country is not true in another country, or even a state, or a region, or a group of people. And that's why we looked at different groups of people before. So here's an example where we're following 2,000 newborns at monthly intervals to measure development of respiratory infections in the first year. Now suppose 50 infants developed respiratory infection in the first year of life. Well, the denominator is the number of people at the beginning of our follow-up who we're following who are at risk of getting the outcome. And of those 50, developed new respiratory infections in the first year of life. So 50 divided by 2,000 is 0.25, which is 2.5%. So the risk of developing a respiratory infection in the first year of life in this population, and again, it's specifying the time, first year of life, is 2.5%. Now, 2.5 out of 100 is the same as 25 out of 1,000, or 250 out of 10,000. So whatever way to express it that is the easiest to comprehend is possible. So in this, we could say 25 out of 1,000 infants in this population, or 1 in 40, will develop infection in the first year of life. Incidence rate measures how rapidly new cases develop during a specified time period. Again, it's new cases per person time. And you can also hear it referred to as incidence in a very general way, or incidence density or rate. Basic formula, the number of new onset cases divided by the person time at risk during study period. So person time accounts for all the time each person is in the population at risk. The length of time for each person is called person time. The sum of person times is called the total person time at risk for the population, and that's what goes in the denominator of these rates. Now, of course, there's an assumption here, and it's maybe difficult to wrap your mind around, but you can reach, for example, 1,000-person years in many different ways. You can follow 100 people for 10 years. You can follow 1,000 people for one year. Or I guess you can follow 10,000 people for a tenth of a year and get 1,000-person years. And this assumes the rate is constant over different periods of time. So be aware of that assumption. Here's a basic, simple cohort study I created with line drawings. As you can see, there are five people being followed forward in time for 12 months. There's only one event, which is signified by a red X at six months. So let's figure out the person time. As I said, it's a sum of all the person times experienced in your cohort during follow-up. So you'll notice that persons number one, three, four, and five have all gone 12 months without either leaving the cohort or leaving the follow-up or getting the outcome. So they each contribute a full year, but person number two got the outcome after six months. At that point, we stopped following that person. That person is no longer being followed for this outcome. Why? Because this person already has it. They are no longer at risk for a new case of this outcome. So what's the total person time? It's four times 12 plus six, or 54 months, or four and a half years. So one new case divided by 4.5 person years is 0.22 cases per person per year. Can we say this in terms of months, person months? Of course we can. One new case in 54 person months is 0.1, 0.0185 cases per person per month, or per person month. We can do it in person seconds. There'd be no point to it, but we can do it. Or person centuries. Now, a word on the relationship between incidence, prevalence, and duration. There was a formula going back a long time in basic texts in epidemiology. Incidence, prevalence equals incidence times duration. And here's a picture of why that occurs. Imagine the prevalence is the pool of people, like a pool of people in the area that you're looking at who have a certain disease, existing disease. Now, entering this pool are people who get new cases of that disease, or incidence. And exiting the pool are people who die of their disease or are cured from their disease. Either way, they no longer have the disease. So prevalence is a measure, is a product of incidence and duration. So if somebody says, oh, the prevalence of disease X is increasing, maybe disease X could be AIDS. There are more people existing with AIDS. The prevalence is increasing. Is that necessarily a bad thing? Well, it depends on how you look at it. It may not be that the incidence of this outcome is increasing. It may be that the survivability is increasing. Measures of mortality, very similar to measures of morbidity. Measures the occurrence of death, can be measured as a proportion or a rate, just like disease incidence. You have the risk of death, risk of disease, rate of death, rate of disease. The statistical calculations for risks and rates for mortality are similar to those for disease morbidity. Now, case fatality rate, this is not a rate. It's called a rate, but it has no unit of time, the way a rate does. It's actually a proportion, the proportion of deaths from a specific illness. So a case fatality rate is the number of deaths from an illness divided by the number of people with that illness. So what percentage of people diagnosed as having a disease die within a certain time after diagnosis? The better the cure, the better the treatment, the lower the case fatality rate. Certain infections, like TB, had a much higher case fatality rate before we developed antibiotics, for example. So case fatality is a measure of the severity of the disease and also the efficacy of the treatment. And it can be used to measure benefits of a new therapy. As the therapy improves, as I mentioned before, the case fatality rate would be expected to decline. And AIDS is an example of that. And like I said before, by reducing the case fatality rate of AIDS, you're actually increasing the prevalence of the disease in the population. So that's not necessarily a bad thing. Proportionate mortality of all deaths, the proportion caused by a certain disease. You can determine, it can determine the leading causes of death. Proportion of cause-specific death is dependent on all other causes of death. This does not tell us the risk of dying from a disease. Here's an example of proportionate mortality taken from the CDC's website. One of every four deaths in the United States is due to cancer. Now, of course, if we reduce mortality from other causes, this proportionate mortality for cancer will increase. So other mortality rates that you hear, crude mortality rate includes all deaths, total population, all deaths in a total population in a time period. So cause-specific mortality includes death from a specific cause, for example, cancer or heart disease, in the total population in a time period. And age-specific mortality rates includes all deaths in a specific age group, so it's not the total population during a time period. So when it comes to age, when it comes to age-specific rates, they're used in something we call age adjustment. And when it comes to mortality, here you have two states, Florida, Alaska. Now, the crude mortality rate, as I just said, is the overall rate of mortality in a population. Does not consider age in any way, just overall crude mortality rate. And as you see, the mortality rate in Florida is almost three times that in Alaska. And if you're living in Florida, you see this crude mortality rate, you might wonder whether you should move, whether you'd be safer living in Alaska. But the obvious answer to that would be, first, wait a minute, maybe there's something going on, maybe there's something different about people in Florida and the people in Alaska. And one thing is that people may realize that Florida is a place where people go to retire, and the age structure may be much older in Florida than it is in Alaska. So how do we factor that out? How do we account for the different age structures? Well, here are the crude mortality rates again, and this shows you how we get the crude mortality rate. We look at the total deaths in the total population. We're not concerned with this age structure. And this is how we get the total in Florida. So can we remove this confounding by age, a term I'll explain again later, confounding by age? Well, we can separate the population into age groups and calculate rates for each age, and then compare the age-specific mortality rates. For example, is the mortality rate in people 65 and older the same? Is the mortality rate in people 55 to 65 the same? If two different populations, if we take, this sentence is maybe a little bit strange, but if we take into account the age structures of the two different populations, we may get comparable rates between populations or in the same population over time. Direct standardization is a method that I'm about to show you briefly. If the age composition of the populations were the same, would there be any differences in mortality rates? Now, in reality, you can't change the population age structure of Florida or Alaska. But direct age adjustment is used to remove the effects of age structure on mortality rates in two different populations by applying the age-specific rates of both states, or both communities, or both countries, if you will, to a standard population. And when you're comparing two states, obvious standard population is the age structure of the US population. So you are making, artificially, of course, but you're making the age structures of Florida and Alaska both conform to the US population. And then we're going to apply age-specific rates. And here's how you get age-specific rates. Now, we're looking in a category of zero to four years old, and we're getting the rates for those people. And then we're doing the same for every category of age in both Alaska and Florida. And we're asking the question, if the deaths in the US were based on Alaska's age-specific mortality rates, what would it be? What would the overall experience be? If the deaths in the US were based on Florida's age-specific mortality rates, what would the overall experience be? And you're looking at the crude, that you've seen before, the crude mortality rates for Alaska and Florida on top. On the bottom, you're looking at the age-adjusted mortality rates in Alaska and Florida respectively. And in fact, the situation is reversed a little bit, you know, without accounting for other factors like gender and other things. You see that the adjusted for age, Florida actually has a better mortality experience than Alaska. Indirect standardization, when age-specific rates are not available, you can use age-specific mortality rates from the general population to calculate the expected number of deaths. And this is called a standardized mortality ratio, observed over expected. If the age composition of the populations were the same, would there be any differences in mortality rates? It's a similar idea to direct standardization. And in most cases, like the ones we were just reviewing, the direct standardization is more intuitive, it's maybe an easier way to do it. This is indirect, is when you don't have age-specific mortality rates. So a little bit about study design. And we're going to start by distinguishing experimental studies from observational studies. Experimental studies are those in which the exposure is in the hands of the investigator, while observational studies merely observe what exposures people choose on their own. So examples of experimental studies include clinical trial, randomized controlled trial, or randomized clinical trial. Clinical trial doesn't have to be randomized. We'll talk a little bit about randomization. Observational studies will talk about cohort studies, case-control studies, cross-sectional studies, ecological studies. So experimental studies are characterized by... So experimental studies are characterized by mainly the manipulation of the exposure by the researcher. So randomized control trials, a randomized control trial or RCT is a type of experimental research designed for comparing different treatments in which the assignment of treatments to patients is made by a random mechanism, slip of a coin. Heads, you get the exposure, the active exposure. B, you get the placebo or inactive exposure, tails, for example. It's customary to present tables of patient characteristics to show that the randomization resulted in a balance in patient characteristics. And I might add that those are known patient characteristics. Randomization theoretically is meant to also balance groups on unknown characteristics that may be related to disease. You can't always know that that randomization worked for an unknown, but you can look at the ones that are known and see the distribution and see if it truly is relatively equal in the treatment group and the alternate group. So with these diagrams, there should always be a time arrow, and I've included one here. Time starts at the top of the slide and goes to the bottom of the slide. We're starting with a study population and presumably an eligible study population. And they're randomly assigned to either a current treatment, a new treatment, or a placebo treatment, for example, which is not really a treatment. And we compare the experience over time. Did they improve or not improve? What was the outcome experience in this group compared to that group over time? So here's a definition or a description of a study that I took from the literature. So if it's a little complicated in its language, it's something that you will see in the literature because I took it from the literature. And it's good to, whether it's clear or not, it's good to be able to read these and get a sense of what type of study design it is. So 15 patients were randomized to receive a preoperative beverage with high or low carbohydrate content. Post-operative cognitive ability was subsequently measured. Subsequently is a nice word. It means after the exposure, we looked at some outcome. If you said this is a clinical trial, you're absolutely correct. And this also is a clinical trial. I'll give you the answer. 98 individuals were randomized to placebo or sertraline, followed by 50 milligrams from day three to 90 and another drug, which I don't want to pronounce right now, three times a day for seven days and 10 milligrams. It's sort of a complicated sentence, but you should be able to pick up that the investigators randomized people to an exposure and then followed them up for an outcome. That's a clinical trial. Some limitations of a clinical trial include ethical considerations. For example, if you want to see if a certain type of cigarette is more harmful than another type of cigarette, is it ethical to randomize people to take what you believe is the more harmful type of cigarette? Well, no, it's not. And there are even, even more outrageous examples of how you cannot do a clinical trial on certain exposures, like perinatal asphyxia, for example. So many hypotheses that you would like to look at don't lend themselves to a clinical trial because they're not ethical. Now, select population, that doesn't, that's not a verb, that's an adjective. It's a select population, meaning that the population, the people who participate in clinical trials may be very different from the people who don't participate in clinical trial. And we'll talk a little bit later about external validity. And duration, clinical trials are very expensive, very time-consuming. Very rarely can you keep a clinical trial going for a long, long, for many years with that kind of expense. And some diseases, though, take many years to fully develop. So that is a limitation. You may not, even though this exposure may be working or this treatment may be working, you won't see it if you don't have your clinical trial going for many years. And it may not be possible. And finally, adherence or compliance to therapy. Many people are given therapies that, for whatever reason, they don't like. The pill is too big, the pill doesn't taste good, I forgot. It's something that you have to deal with. It's different when people choose their own exposures as opposed to when you choose the exposures for them. Use of blinding, it's important when knowing treatment could influence the interpretation of results. If you know you're getting this super-duper treatment or this super-duper headache medicine, for example, your headache may go away by itself. So that's why we have a placebo, to ensure control and treatment groups have the same experience. So you're getting typically, it may not be possible with a surgical technique, for example, you're not going to do a sham surgery on a person that has no meaning to it. So it's not always possible to blind, but with most study drugs, you can create one that looks and tastes like the, like the study drug. So it's more possible in that case. Blinding helps ensure that biases avoided. Bias can be defined as a distortion of the truth. And we don't want to distort the truth. So single-blind, patient does not know what treatment they are receiving. Double-blind, the patient and investigator do not know what treatment. And like I said, you cannot be used for some treatments such as surgery, but for most therapeutic interventions, you know, especially including drugs, always double-blind if you can. And most of the time, the investigator does not need to know what pills the subjects are getting in a clinical trial. So you need to obtain groups that are, I mean, the idea of this randomization, this randomized control trial is to obtain a group, groups that are comparable for everything except the treatment. So that differences in outcome can fairly be ascribed only to the differences between the groups, in particular, the treatment. And that's why you look to see whether the distribution of known risk factors for disease, for example, are relatively equal in the two groups. And you hope through randomization that unknown risk factors are also distributed relatively equally. The larger the sample size, the more likely that you will have equal distribution between the two groups. So a clinical trial can be viewed as a special type of prospective cohort study because it involves active follow-up of a group of people and determines their outcomes. However, a cohort study typically referred to is observational, no assigned treatments. But the directionality, I'll use that term again. It's a forward directionality, just like a clinical trial. We're starting from the point of exposure and we are looking forward in time. We are looking forward to see what happens to our exposed group compared to our unexposed group. And cohort study and clinical trial both do that. In fact, this outline for a prospective cohort study could be the same for a clinical trial, except for the fact that there's a randomization process. There's a treatment assignment process. Other than that, we are following through over time. We are starting with eligible patients, of course. We are assessing their exposure in a prospective cohort study. Do you smoke? Yes or no? And we separate you on that question, on that exposure, and we look to see what your outcomes are. And we can compare those outcomes. Do smokers have a different experience with this outcome than non-smokers? And this is what we were trying to show before. This is how you follow up people. This is how you look for outcomes. And this is how you quantify your measures of effect. Your risks or your rates. Now, I showed you this with a rate before, and we said one event per 54-person months. We could also do a risk, as I defined it before. It's one event divided by five people, or the risk of 20% that this outcome will occur in 12 months. But when we follow people up in a cohort, we're comparing between an exposed group and unexposed group or different levels of exposure. So cohort studies, a little bit more about cohort studies. They're groups defined on the basis of some characteristics. For example, exposure versus non-exposure. And are prospectively followed to see whether an outcome of interest occurs. Compare the proportion of persons with the disease in the exposed group to the proportion with the disease in the unexposed group. Now, that's comparing the risks. What's the risk of disease in the exposed compared to the risk of disease in the unexposed? But you can also compare rates. The reason that we do this, if the exposure is associated with disease, we expect that the proportion of persons with the disease in the exposed group or the rate will be greater than the proportion with the disease in the unexposed group. Or if it's a protective factor like physical activity or eating fruit and vegetables, we might expect that the rate or risk of disease in the exposed is actually lower than that in the unexposed group. Same diagram, very simple. This is a prospective study, a prospective cohort, meaning that we're starting now, we are actively in real time collecting information from you or a group of people and following you forward in time. There is something called, what this slide is calling a retrospective cohort study. I tend to use the term historical cohort study. And that is, you're still, the reason I don't like retrospective so much or it's confusing is because the directionality of this type of cohort study is still forward. You're still looking at exposure first, and exposure is recorded first. And the outcome is looked at later in time. So it still has what I would call a forward directionality. So this is why I tend to prefer the term historical cohort study because you are going back assembling the cohort study after the fact. For example, if there's records from a university on students who smoked or didn't smoke back in 1960, and you can get records on their outcomes after 1960, and you can do it all now because all those records are available. It is a historical cohort study. It's still a forward directionality. We're still looking at recorded exposure prior to recorded outcome. Retrospective almost implies that it's got a backwards directionality. It does not. Prospective cohort studies define sample free, define a sample free of the disease or outcome of interest. Measure the exposure and classify as exposed or unexposed at baseline or the beginning of the study, then follow up to ascertain outcome. And I know I'm repeating myself now, but measures of the proportion of outcome between exposed and unexposed. So verbally, I'm explaining it and hopefully pictorially as well. Now, retrospective cohort study is my favorite synonym, historical cohort study. It's a historical prospective study, it's a historical study. Some people may call it a historical prospective study. I don't. Non-concurrent prospective study, I don't. I call it historical cohort study. Do not, do not design retrospective cohort studies a priori. It, you, in other words, you take what you get. You can, you don't have the advantage of saying, okay, I'm studying X and Y, X exposure. I need all these covariates and I can select them right now because I know what I want. I know what I want to collect. I can create exposure assessment the way I want it. When you're dealing with the historical records, you take what you've got, and that's a limitation of it. You get what, you get what you get. You get what's there. It may not be optimal. The advantages, I mean, that's the main disadvantage of a historical cohort study. You have to take what you get, and you may be missing smoking information, for example. And you may really want that information, and there's nothing you can do about that. On the other hand, certainly in terms of expense and time, historical cohort studies are faster and cheaper. All the information is archived. It's all there for you to abstract and work with. So in general, cohort study strengths may be used to define incidence, natural history of disease. Known temporal sequence, in other words, in such a study, you know when exposure occurred, when outcome occurred. You know that exposure comes first. In other study designs, you'll see, you don't know whether the outcome came first or the exposure came first. So it's efficient investigating rare exposures. If you have, for example, a cohort of rubber factory workers or rubber manufacturing workers. If you were just to sample the general population, you would have a tough time finding enough rare, you know, rare exposures like that, rubber workers, rubber plant workers. Now, with a cohort study, you can go to a rubber plant or more than one rubber plant and enroll people that way. Another, another advantage, it permits study of multiple exposures, assuming you know what exposures you're interested in and outcomes. For example, you can look at smoking. And you can, with a cohort study, you look at smoking and lung cancer. You can look at smoking and emphysema. You can look at smoking and thyroid cancer. You can look at smoking and breast cancer. Look at smoking and lung cancer. You will look at smoking and osteoporosis. So it gives you the option of multiple outcomes. As far as multiple exposures, you can ask anything you want if it's a prospective study. But be aware that there may be something come up, and it's very difficult to go back in time and reassess. And reassessment of a cohort as it's going forward is expensive. It's been done, multiple measures, repeated measure of exposure, but it's expensive. And speaking of expensive, it's a major limitation of a cohort study. It's slow to find answers. If there's a new disease that's suddenly taking its toll on a population, a cohort study may not be your best option. It may take a long time to find the answer. Just like any study, including a clinical trial, the associations may be due to confounding, which we'll define later. Exposure assessed at baseline may be incomplete, as I mentioned before. Now, you do have an option of reassessment. It is expensive. Disease with long preclinical phase may not be detected. We said that with, we said that with clinical trials. You know, sometimes a clinical trial, you just can't afford to have a clinical trial that goes on long enough to capture the latency of colorectal cancer or breast cancer. It can also be true with cohort studies. There are cohort studies that go on for decades. There are also studies that don't. Those that don't may not be able to capture certain disease exposure relationships. And it's sensitive to follow-up bias. In other words, selection bias, which we'll define later. It's a loss of disease, it's a loss of subjects. Doesn't have to even be disease. It's a loss of people from your population. And if that loss is selective related to disease and exposure, well, you can get the wrong answer. So here's a quiz. What type of study is this? Cigarette smoking data were collected on all household members during two private consensus says in Washington County, Maryland. These two groups were followed up, one from 1963 to 78, and the other from 75 to 94, for first-time diagnosis of rectal cancer. So what's the unit of analysis? People. We'll talk about why that's important later. What is the directionality of this? Well, it seems to be forward. We're assessing exposure and then looking forward in time from that point to see what happens with respect to the outcome, which is rectal cancer. This is a classic cohort study. What type of study is this? Now, you got this one before. I gave you this one before. If you say cohort study, you're not entirely wrong. It has a forward directionality. Exposure is assessed. People are followed up for outcome. But the exposure is manipulated by the investigators. So this makes it a special type of study, of cohort study. This is in fact a clinical trial. It's easy to get confused, but this is a clinical trial. So now we're going to get into case control studies. In this definition, we compare various characteristics, past exposure for cases, cases or subjects with disease, to those of control, subjects without disease. For example, if you have a cold, I can ask you how much vitamin C you took in the past two weeks. And I can ask the same thing of people who don't have a cold. So comparison of interest, compare the proportion with the exposure in the cases to the proportion with the exposure in the control group. So, you know, if my hypothesis is correct, people without a cold, more of those people, a higher proportion... more of those people, a higher proportion of those people will have a history of taking vitamin C than people with a cold. But that's actually not my hypothesis, because I'm not, I'm just using that as an example. So if the exposure is associated with the disease, we expect that the proportion of persons with the exposure in the cases will be greater than the proportion with the exposure in the control group. If it's protective of disease, we would expect the exposure proportion in persons with the disease to be lower than the, than that in the control. So a case control study, this is the diagram I have. We should have a time arrow. There it is. And this is going from present to past. So we're starting by assembling diseased and non-diseased people. And then we are asking them questions or ascertaining exposures in the past. What directionality would you say that has? A cohort has forward directionality. This has a backwards directionality, or backward directionality. We're starting with cases, we're starting with disease, deciding who has it and who doesn't. And then we're assessing exposures in the past. That is a backward directionality. It's more efficient for rare diseases. If there's a rare disease and you have a huge cohort, you'll need a huge cohort in order to get the numbers of people with that disease. However, in a case control study, we can go wherever we need to go to find people with that disease. It's more efficient for rare diseases. Can evaluate multiple exposures. We can ask questions about what they were exposed to, and we can keep asking, and keep asking, and keep asking. It's faster, it's less expensive, you can get answers more quickly. In the case where there's a new disease that's affecting morbidity and mortality, we can find people with that disease, find people without, and start getting answers right away. Think of an example you may want to look up as eosinophilia myalgia syndrome, EMS. Eosinophilia, eosinophilia myalgia syndrome. It was handled through the use, good use of case control studies. It was solved. Mystery was solved through the use of case control studies. And you can see why a cohort study, if you read about eosinophilia myalgia syndrome, you can probably understand why cohort study would be too long of an effort and not the right study design. Too long to get the answer and not the right study design. But a case control study has many vulnerabilities. There are people who discount the results of case control studies simply because of the known vulnerabilities. But this is a mistake. Again, read about eosinophilia myalgia syndrome. Challenges of control selection. Do the controls represent who we want them to represent? And the challenges of retrospective exposure assessment. Can you remember how many carrots you ate in the past week? You might not even know how many dishes you ate that contained carrots. But just remembering that is hard, difficult enough. So challenges of retrospective exposure assessment. Nested case control studies. Is case control study nested in a cohort study? Control selected either at baseline, it's called a case cohort study, or more commonly, at the time the case occurs, a nested case control study. It still has the advantage of the data being collected on exposure prior to disease. It eliminates recall bias. It's less expensive than expanding the analysis to include the entire cohort. I'll give you an example. And the OR is maybe perhaps less biased, I shouldn't, I shouldn't say unbiased, but less biased than estimated the relative risk. But let's give an example. Let's say the nurses cohort study, 100,000 nurses all gave blood at baseline. So you've got 100,000 blood samples frozen. You want to look at a new protein in relation to breast cancer. So you can either thaw 100,000 bloods, look at the protein, whether it's there or not there, and look to see, compare the rates or risks of disease in exposed and non-exposed. Or you can get, let's say, 300 cases, 300 controls, and just get those samples, 600 samples versus 100,000. So nested case control study can be more efficient, more cost efficient, more time efficient, and, and yet still retain the forward directionality of a cohort study. So here's a little quiz. What type of study is this? Taken directly from the literature. Danish women with the first time multiple sclerosis discharge diagnosis from a neurological department who were, pardon the language, but I took it directly from the literature, who were at most 40 years old at the time of diagnosis during the period 1998 to 2005, and an age and geographically matched healthy group. From those two groups, information on number of full-term pregnancies, obviously past full-term pregnancies, was elicited. So what's the unit of analysis? Danish women. What is the directionality? Well, we're starting with cases and controls, and we're asking them, that's where we're starting. And then we're asking them about past exposures. We're looking back. It's got a backwards directionality. So if you said case control study, you would be correct. Now we're going into cross-sectional studies. They're prevalent studies. All measurements of exposure and outcome are made simultaneously. It's a snapshot. How many of you have colds? How many of you had an orange today? It's not looking back at past exposures. It's not looking forward to see what happens to you. It's a cross-section. It's a snapshot. Disease proportions are determined and compared among those with or without the exposure or at varying levels of the exposure. Examine the association, determination of associations with outcomes. Generate hypotheses that are the basis for further studies. Very important. Cross-sectional studies don't often reach the level that they can convince you because of this limitation. You don't even know if the disease caused the outcome. For example, did your eating an orange today prevent your cold? Or did your cold cause you to need an orange? Most appropriate for studying the association between chronic diseases, chronic exposure. But sometimes useful for common acute diseases of short duration. The most important thing to remember is that it's a snapshot in time. So what's the directionality of a cross-sectional study? Is it forward, backward, or neither? It's neither. Even though there's a time arrow here, that's a time arrow showing you what you need to do. But the bottom line, and here is the bottom line, this is taken, exposure and outcome are assessed at the same point in time. There's no directionality. You define a population, you gather information on exposure and outcome, and then you try to correlate exposure and outcome. But you don't know, you can't always know which came first. If it's a germline genetic mutation, you know that came first. You're born with it. But if it's an orange and you're cold, we can't say which came first. So ecological study. Ecological study, we talked about the unit of observation being women or children. This is the population as a whole. The disease rates and exposure are measured in each of a series of populations. So what is the, what is the average or overall rate of a disease in a country? And for an exposure, what's the per capita consumption of fish? Now, if I said the per capita consumption in the United States of fish is two fish per week, or two portions of fish per week, does that mean that you personally ate two portions of fish per week? No. It's an overall per capita. And that's what distinguishes an ecological study. So what type of study is this? 200 children aged nine to 12 years were recruited to evaluate the effect of body mass on foot structure. In addition to BMI, or Body Mass Index, three reliable anthropometric measures, anthropometric measures were recorded. Foot length, forefoot width, and navicular height. What kind of study is that? The first thing I would ask is what's the directionality? And what's the unit of analysis? Well, there seems to be no directionality, because we're looking at a slice of time, a snapshot. We're not looking forward in time like a cohort study. We're not looking backward in time like a case control. So the real choice here is between an ecological study and a cross-sectional study. So what's the unit of analysis? Is it a population-wide unit of analysis? Or is it an individual unit of analysis? Is it people? The first line, 200 children aged nine to 12 years were recruited, individuals. I would rule out ecological study at that point and say that it was a cross-sectional study. More on ecological study, sometimes called correlational studies. Measures that represent characteristics of the entire population are used to describe disease in relation to some factor of interest. The entire population. Presence of suspected risk factors can be measured in different populations and compared with the incidence of a particular disease. For example, cancer rates by omega-3 fatty acid intake. These dots represent countries. And I just made this up. I've seen graphs like it, but I actually made up these data. So that's USA, which has a higher cancer rate and a lower omega-3 fatty acid intake. Japan has per capita higher omega-3 fatty acid intake and overall lower experience with a certain type of cancer. So you might say that there's a relationship there, but we remember, we don't know what's going on on an individual level here. This is a per capita, an average countrywide level. So it's hypothesis generating, but cannot establish causal relationship. Unable to control the effects of potential confounding factors. Unable to link exposure with disease in a particular individual, which we call ecologic fallacy. Suspected risk factor and disease are associated at the population level, but not at the individual level. For example, the further north you go from the equator, the higher incidence you have of certain conditions, maybe multiple sclerosis, maybe certain types of cancer. You can say, okay, on a, on a population-wide level, the further north you get from the equator, the less average sunlight you're exposed to on a population level. And on a population level, you see these countries reporting more disease. So you can say, maybe vitamin, maybe exposure to sunlight, maybe vitamin D from the sun leads to lower risk, or is related to the risk of these outcomes. But if you look within these countries, maybe the people who are out the most and get the most sun are not, they're still getting the outcome at the same rate or have the same risk as the people who are staying indoors. It's an ecological fallacy to assume that what happens on a population level also is true on an individual level. So what type of study is this? This is taken from the literature. During the period 1995 to 2000, 81,132 lung cancer cases were reported in Texas. Researchers examined the association of metal air releases with the average annual age-adjusted primary and non-small cell lung cancer rates in the 254 Texas counties. What type of study is this? Now, the directionality is implied, but it's, there really is no clear directionality. Furthermore, what's the unit of analysis? Is it people? Or is it averages? Is it county-wide in this case? County-wide rates? Well, the latter seems to be true. If you said cohort, if you said cross-sectional study, I think you got it wrong. I think this is an ecological study, because these things are not based on individual experiences, but based on the county-wide experiences of these 254 Texas counties. Here's another one. A survey was performed in nine European countries. Austria, Belgium, Denmark, Iceland, the Netherlands, Norway, Portugal, Spain, and Sweden. As part of the pro-children study, data on usual intake of fruit and vegetables and related correlates were collected by means of a self-administered questionnaire among 11-year-old schoolchildren. So what is the directionality? They collected information on vegetables and correlates. But they didn't look backwards, they didn't look forwards. There's no directionality. What's the unit of analysis? You see all these countries. You might be fooled into thinking this must be an ecological study. But any study out there, even a clinical trial, can take place in more than one place. Can take place in several countries at the same time. The unit of analysis is 11-year-old schoolchildren. It's individuals. Therefore, this is a cross-sectional study. So we're about to go into measures of association. I think it might be good to take a bio break. We're at least an hour into this at this point. So I'm going to give you five minutes to take a break. And we'll come back in about five minutes. We try to be back in five minutes.
Great. And Dr. Terry, there's one question that relates to what we were just talking about that perhaps you can answer prior to the break.
Sure.
The question is, I thought cohort studies were less efficient in investigating rare exposures compared with case, case control studies. Would it be worth the while following 100,000 people where the incidence is 0.3%?
Well, that seems to be a question that has a mixing of terms. Rare diseases or rare exposures? Now, this person said rare exposures or rare diseases?
Rare, rare exposures.
Yes, all right. So that's, and then they were talking about a rare outcome in the next part of the question. So it seems to be mixing up two ideas. Rare exposures. Now, if you were to do a case control study and hope you'll find enough people who were exposed to rubber plant manufacturing materials, good luck with that. It's going to be difficult. So rare exposure is more efficient with a cohort study. You can actually go to a rubber plant and create a cohort. When it comes to rare diseases, which is the, seems to be the second part of this person's question, that's a different story. For a rare disease, a cohort is not more efficient. In fact, for a rare disease, a case control, because you start by assembling diseased people, that gives you the ability to go out and find them, even if you need to go throughout the entire country. If you want to look at arsenic poisoning, I would suggest you go, since it's so rare, I suggest you don't try to do a cohort of 10 million people to try to see who has arsenic. I mean, the best thing to do is a case control study where you go around the country and collect that 100 or 200 people in the entire country who've had arsenic poisoning. So do you see, I'm trying to, I hope I have answered the question. The first part of the question had to do with rare exposures, but the second part of the question really was talking about a low incidence or rare disease.
Okay. Thank you very much. I believe so. And if there are any follow-up questions to that and as well as anything else that we've been talking about, please type in your question in the question box. And at the next break, we will take a moment to answer those questions, and then at the end of the presentation. So I think right now, Dr. Terry, did you say a five to 10-minute break?
Yeah, I would say, I would say five to 10, I actually said five minutes. Is that too short?
Let's plan on, no, five minutes, so about 1:18?
Yeah, 1:19 by my watch.
Okay, great. We'll see you then.
Thank you. All right. Have you guys heard me singing during the break?
Okay, Dr. Terry, I believe we should be getting ready to get started again.
Okay, great. If anyone heard me singing during the break, it's, I had some great music on earlier. So I had to, had to sing a little bit for your entertainment. But now we're back, measures of association. In general, cohort studies use the measures that we talked about that are related to follow-up of people for the outcome. Risk rate, and sometimes you'll hear hazard ratio, which is synonymous for our purposes to a rate. You can, you can get an odds ratio from a cohort study. And we haven't really talked about odds ratios, but it's, it's not generally done. It's just a possibility. So I listed it here, but in general, risks and rates. A case-control study looks at odds ratios to distinguish the kind of odds ratios you get from a cohort study from those of a case-control study. You might say exposure odds ratios. So you might see that term, but generally you will see simply odds ratios. Can you, can you get risk ratios from a case-control study? Generally not. But it's not impossible. For example, if you have all the cases of a certain outcome occurring in a defined population, such as Sweden, and you know the denominator, you can derive risk ratios, for example. However, that's a very rare situation. So it's listed here. I wouldn't say it's absolutely impossible. It's just not typical. So relative risk or risk ratio is an estimate of the magnitude of an association between exposure and disease. How strong is the association between exposure and disease? It indicates the likelihood of developing the disease for the exposed group relative to those who are not exposed. And here's an example. I don't want to go too much into formulas. You have example, but you'll have this example. It's a cohort study and you're looking at a two-by-two table. Which way are you looking? Some students have, at least at first, trouble understanding, but remember what we're doing in a cohort study. We're starting with exposure and we're looking forward, so to speak, to the outcome, to the, to the, the disease. So, and we also showed you before that you need to separate, you need to look at the disease experience and the exposed and compare it to the, the exposure, uh, the disease experience and the unexposed. So remembering your formula for a risk, it is the number of new cases of disease divided by the total group being followed up. So it's not 24 divided by 50. Look at the upper row. Those are the exposed people in the upper row. They're exposed people who got disease or didn't get disease. So you're looking at, you, you do see the 24 people got disease. That's the numerator. But that should be divided by the total number of people you're following up. And I didn't give you that number. But you should be able to figure that out. You have 24 people and 50 people who are exposed. So the total number of exposed is 74 people. That's your denominator for the risk. Similarly, in the, in the non-exposed group, you have 13, uh, 315 people who got disease during follow-up and the total is 1191. So you're able to derive risks for both the exposed and unexposed and then dividing the risk in the exposed by the unexposed, you get a risk ratio. And in this case, it's 1.23. We'll talk about what that means as we go through this. What is a risk? We're, well, let's say, what if the risk in the exposed was the exact same as the risk in the unexposed? You would say there's no association. The risk ratio would not be zero. When you divide a risk by the exact same risk, you get a risk ratio of 1.0. So the null hypothesis, that the risk of the outcome in the exposed persons is equal to the risk of the outcome in the unexposed persons. Your null hypothesis is that the risk ratio equals one. And that's another way of saying there is no association between the exposure and the outcome. Now, there are alternative hypotheses. The risk of the outcome in the exposed persons is not equal to the risk of the outcome in the unexposed person. So anything other than 1.0 means that there is a relationship. It simply doesn't say what direction that relationship goes. Does the exposure increase your risk of disease? Does the exposure reduce your risk of disease? Smoking may increase your risk of disease. Eating fruit and vegetables may decrease your risk of disease. So this is a two-sided alternative hypothesis. And it really, if there's any theoretical possibility, whether you believe it or not, whether you think that it's going to go that way or not, if it's possible for a factor to go either direction, you must use a two-sided alternate hypothesis. It's more conservative. It's more credible. It's the right thing to do. If it's absolutely impossible for a factor to go in either direction, you can choose alternate hypotheses that are one-sided or one-direction. The risk ratio is higher than one or lower than one. Not common to see that. It's only to be used sparingly when there is no possibility, even small, remote possibility, that the relationship can go in either direction. So how do we interpret risk ratios? Risk ratios between one and two. Start with that. So if you take the risk ratio minus 1.0, you get the percent increased risk. In the early example, we had a risk ratio of 1.23. If we subtract 1.0 from that, we get 0.23 or a 23% increased risk due to exposure. In this example, we have a risk ratio of 1.5. We subtract the null, which is 1.0. We get 0.5, which is 50% increased risk of outcome given exposure. When the relative risk is above 2.0, we usually simply say the number, the risk ratio is the number of times the increased risk. So if the risk ratio of 3.0, we would say it's exposure increases risk of disease three times compared to non-exposure. For relative risks less than one, a way to determine the percent decreased risk is 1.0 minus the risk ratio. So if you see a risk ratio of 0.75, for example, 1.0 minus 0.75 equals 0.25, which translates to 25% less risk of outcome given the exposure. So exposure reduces your risk. If you see risk ratio equals 0.5, exposure reduces your risk by 25%. So be aware that risk ratios, when they're computed, often come with 95% confidence intervals. And it's basically a measure of precision. People could say that, all right, don't worry so much about the formula because the computer can do that. But you're going to be given numbers that are on either side of the, of the relative risk. And it's giving you an idea of how confident you are in the stability of your relative risk estimate. So without going into the formulas, I suggest you, you understand what confidence intervals are, what they're trying to do, what information they're providing. Similar to a risk ratio, rate ratio is a, it's a ratio of two rates. It's the rate of outcome in exposed versus the rate of outcome in unexposed. And it's interpreted similarly. The rate of outcome in exposed is X times the rate of outcome in the unexposed. And this is just an example. And in this case, the rate of outcome in exposed is 2.5 times the rate of the outcome in the unexposed. Analysis of a case-control study. Odds are another way of representing a probability. As, as we discussed earlier, with a case-control study, you often don't, except in that example I gave you, you usually don't know the underlying population that gave rise to the cases. You don't know the number in the denominator. Therefore, you can't calculate a risk. So the odds are another way of representing a probability. The odds is a ratio of probability that the event of interest occurs to the probability that it does not. The odds are often estimated by the ratio of the number of times that the event occurs to the number of times that it does not. I'll give you an example in a second. Relative risk, on the other hand, requires an estimate of the incidence of, of the disease. But for most case-control studies, as I mentioned, we do not know the incidence of disease because we determine the number of cases and controls when the study is designed. And we really don't know the underlying cohort. We don't really know the underlying population that gave rise to this group. We have an idea and the better our idea, the better we can make assumptions about our odds ratio, but we don't know exactly. So therefore, we can't calculate a relative risk. For case-control studies generally use the odds ratio. And here's a formula for the odds ratio. It's not anything to dwell on, at least for people who are not formula, who, who like formulas. But the calculations for the odds ratio are relatively simple. So here's an example. You have a case-control study of 200 CHD or coronary heart disease cases and 400 controls or people without CHD to examine the association of smoking with CHD. So what is the odds of smoking among CHD cases? And I've circled, now look at CHD cases. It's the column on the left. It includes exposed and non-exposed cases. But the odds of smoking or the odds of exposure in that group of people is simply the number of smokers divided by the number of non-smokers. So 112 divided by 88 and you get 1.27. In the controls, it's the same. The number of smokers, 176, divided by the number of controls, 224, which gives you a value of 0.79. Now, we've got to take the ratio because it's an odds ratio. So we will take the odds of exposure in the cases and divide that by the odds of exposure in the controls. 127 or 1.27 divided by 0.79. And we get an odds ratio of 1.61. And the interpretation is the case's odds of exposure is 1.6 times that of control. Is that as intuitive as a relative risk? For me, it isn't. A relative risk is a more intuitive measure. But the odds ratio can estimate the relative risk. You will actually read papers where an odds ratio is generated in a case-control study. And then in the discussion, they talk about the risk. They are making the assumption that their odds ratios estimate risk ratios. Now, a simpler calculation is the cross-products. It's the same thing and it leads to the same number. But it's often described as simply AD over BC or A times G divided by B times C. A is always exposed cases and D is always unexposed controls. So unexposed cases and exposed controls can be B or C. It depends on how you draw your table. But it doesn't matter in this case which is B and C. You can point the arrow from 88 to 176 or from 176 to 88. You're going to get the same number. In this case, it's 112, which is A times 224, which is D, and divide that by 88, which is C in this case, and 176, which is B, and you get the exact same number. So it's an easier calculation, cross-products. So again, the odds ratio is the odds of exposure in case, cases divided by the odds of exposure in controls. It works the same way as a relative risk in the sense that the null value is odds ratio equals one because if the odds of exposure in cases is the same as that in controls, there's no difference. That means there's no relationship and that would be an odds ratio of one. And just like the risk ratio, if it's greater than one, the exposure is positively associated with the disease. And if it's less than one, the exposure is negatively associated with the disease. The odds ratio, the odds of exposure among the diseased is X times higher, lower than the odds of exposure among the non-diseased. And again, people will assume sometimes, and justifiably in many cases, that their odds ratios estimate the risk ratios. So you will actually read or hear them talking about their odds ratios almost in turns as they, they are talking about risk ratios. So they might go from what's technically correct, the odds of exposure among the diseased is X times higher or lower than the odds of exposure among the non-diseased. They might go from that to the risk of disease among the exposed is X times higher or lower than that in the unexposed. So it's important to keep track of this language, but when you see that an odds ratio is being interpreted as a risk ratio, it's because the odds ratio can estimate the risk ratio. And it's more intuitive for many people. Your risk of disease as opposed to your odds of exposure. Your risk of disease as opposed to your odds of exposure if you have the disease, which is more intuitive for you? So the odds ratio can be used to estimate the relative risk when in a case, in a case control study, when the cases are representative people with the disease in the population and with respect to history of exposure and the controls are representative of the entire study population or the source population. We don't always know if this, if they are representative. We have to make the assumption. But the, but the typical assumption that people will make is that the disease is rare. And rare in this case is, well, you know, the general thought was 10%. If, if in the source population the disease had more than 10%, more than 10% of the people developed the disease, this is more, this is not rare. And you'll see this. If you plot this out, if you plot, if you do an experiment where you're, you're increasing the prevalence and risk of disease in a population, you'll find that after 10%, the odds ratio starts to overestimate the relative risk by about 10% at that point. And then, the, the less rare the disease is, the more common it is, the more the odds ratio overestimates. Goes higher than the relative risk. Odds ratio estimates, estimates relative risk when the disease is rare. So you'll see that. And this is a diagram of how that can happen, you know? And when, you'll see when the disease is rare, you know, the contribution of cases, you know, people with the disease become so small that the odds ratio is very, very close to the risk ratio. So you can, you can plot out this formula if you want. But, and some people may or may not argue with the 10% rule. But it's, it's a reasonable rule. At 10%, at, at the point where 10% of the people are getting the disease, odds ratio overestimates the risk ratio by about the same amount. And then it increases from there. Odds ratios for matched case control studies, those are computed slightly differently. Because in one-to-one matching as opposed to frequency matching, it becomes the pairs that you're using to calculate the odds ratio. If, and the discordant pairs are the only ones of interest. And in that case, it's B over C. Now this, you know, most of us are going to use a computer. This is a conditional, this is what the computer does when they do a conditional logistic regression as opposed to an unconditional logistic regression. It's just something to be aware of that when you've matched individually, you need to account for that. That's the take-home message. You somehow need to account for that. And there are ways to do it. Measures of impact. So what we've been looking at up till now with the risk ratios, rate ratios, odds ratios, are measures of association. How strongly is the exposure related to the outcome? Measures of impact are different. And there are some things that might be confusing about it. To measure, they're called public health measures. They're measures not of how associated X is with Y or exposure with the disease, but how much of an impact it's going to have on society. That's why we call them the measures of impact. So risk ratio and odds ratio measure strength of the association. But how much of the, the disease can be attributed to the exposure? How much of the, for example, cardio, cardiovascular risk experienced by smokers can be attributed to smoking? The OR, the odds ratio, the risk ratio do not address this. So one of the things that we use to address these measures of impact is the risk difference. And it's often referred to as attributable risk. And it refers to the amount of risk attributable to the exposure of interest. For example, in the, oh dear. I did not show you the birth cohort analysis, so I'm referring to it erroneously. But think of any example that I've given. And the risk difference is the risk in the exposed minus the risk in the unexposed. In that example, it was the excess risk of preterm birth attributable, attributable to prenatal care. But I'm going to give you another example in a second. The important thing to remember here is that you have the risk, R1, it's an abbreviation often for risk in the exposed, R sub 0 or sub naught, is the risk in the unexposed. To do a risk ratio, I will simply take the ratio of R1 or risk in the exposed to the risk in the unexposed. Here, I am, I'm actually subtracting the risk in the, I'm subtracting out from the risk in the exposed the risk experienced in the unexposed. Why am I doing that? Let me give you an example with, for example, lung cancer. Now, people can be exposed to smoking or not exposed to smoking. And smoking does cause lung cancer. So let's say in this group where you're looking at this slide, on the left side, you have the risk experience of people who don't smoke. On the right bar, you see the risk experience of people who smoke. Now, among the people who smoke, are all of the lung cancers due to smoking? The answer is no. In this case, there is what we call a background risk. There's a background risk that everyone experiences. The way to estimate the background risk in this group is to look at people who don't smoke. It's only that part of the risk that's above and beyond the background risk that we call the excess risk. And how do we get the excess risk? We take the risk, the entire risk in the exposed, and we subtract out the risk in the unexposed. And that's represented by that dotted line. Everything below that dotted line in the exposed is their background risk. We presume that would be their risk if they didn't smoke. Above that is the risk that they, is excess. It's the extra risk that comes from their exposure. It's the amount of risk that's due to the exposure. And you get that by just subtracting out the risk in the unexposed from the risk in the exposed. The risk difference, attributable risk. So here you see incidence not due to exposure. It's the background risk. Incidence due to exposure is the excess risk. So here's an example. Sleeping position and crib death. So prone is the exposure of interest. Sleeping prone is the exposure of interest. And hopefully, you know how to read these tables a little bit now. So we're going to get a risk in the prone group. The number of new cases of crib death, 9, divided by the total, which is those who died and those who didn't, 846. And we get 10.64 per thousand or 1.064 per hundred. The one-year risk in the other group, people not sleeping or children not sleeping prone, is 6 divided by 1761 or 3.41 per thousand. The risk difference is the total risk in the prone group, in the exposed group, minus out, subtract out the background risk. And you're left with the excess. You're left with the attributable risk, 7.23 per thousand. That is the impact of, of children sleeping prone in, in this society, in this group, in this population. It's the added risk due to exposure. Here's a fancy formula for what we call the attributable risk percent. Let me go back a slide. What are we actually trying to achieve? We're looking at, okay, we have this attributable risk. It's 7.23 per thousand. Is that a large percent of the total number of, is that a large percent of the total risk due to sleeping prone? Is it a small percentage? We have an absolute number. But is it a large percentage of crib death due to sleeping prone or a small percentage of the risk? So what we ultimately do is we look at the percentage by taking the excess and dividing by the total. So the total risk in prone sleepers is 10.64 per thousand. The excess is 7.23 per thousand. So the percent of the total that's excess is 68%. So that same absolute number, 7.23, could be a high percentage or a low percentage depending on the total. In this case, 7.23 out of 10.64 is a significant amount of excess risk in terms of its percentage, 68%. Population attributable risk. It's a similar concept. Instead of looking at the excess in the exposed group, we're looking at the excess in the population as a whole. The population risk as a whole is a combination of unexposed and exposed people. So how much, if this was smoking, for example, how much of the total risk in the total population is due to the fact that some people smoked? Of course, that will depend on how many people smoke, what percentage of people smoke. But in this case, what would you do? Well, you'd do the same thing. You'd take away the baseline risk from the total population risk. And then you'd have the excess risk in the population as a whole or population attributable risk. So you're going to take, this is the excess. This is the, the part of the risk that's above and beyond the background risk. So we're looking at the total population now. And we're subtracting out the baseline risk, which is the same. It's the unexposed, 3.41. So in this case, the total population risk is 5.75. Taking out the background risk leaves us with the excess of 2.35 per thousand for the entire population. And if you were going to take a percentage, what would you do? Again, you'd look at that excess, 2.35, and divide it by the total, 5.75. And in the population as a whole, 40.8% of the risk of this outcome is due to exposure. So you can do it in the exposed, which we did first thing, or you can do it in the population as a whole, which we did in the subsequent example. These terms, population attributable risk percent and attributable risk percent in the exposed is also known as the etiologic fraction. So if you see etiologic fraction, you'll know that they're talking about population attributable risk percent. Etiologic fraction in the exposed or etiologic fraction in the entire population. So summary of these measures. Absolute measures, like the ones we just looked at, address questions about public health impact of an exposure. Excess risk in the exposed or population attributable to the exposure. How many more cases will we see if exposure increases? How many less cases in the clinic will we see if exposure decreases? You might say they're public health measures or practical measures. Relative measures address questions about etiology and relations between exposure and outcome. How strong is the relationship between X and Y? How strong of a causal factor is X in Y? And is this exposure in this disease? They're different measures. They need to be seen as different measures. So now, a little bit about causal inference. Since we're talking about the difference between public health measures and etiologic or causal measures, we'll talk a little bit about causal inference. Now, the epidemiologic triad is more of a infectious disease epidemiology model. It's an older one, one that I don't use as much being chronic disease epidemiology. But the basic idea, and this is a classic example of looking at agent, host, and environment. You have a vector here, which is, and this is, you probably have already guessed, is malaria. And you have a, an infectious agent that causes malaria. And you have an environment that breeds like water, swamps that breed the vector that pick up the agent from the host and transfer it to another person. And so, I mean, these models were useful in, in understanding how to prevent malaria. You can change the environment, get rid of the vector, and there may be treatments for the agent. So this is an early sort of model for infectious disease epidemiology. Causal inference in the 50s and 60s. Now, they started going more towards chronic diseases at that point. Non-infectious diseases of unknown etiology. There was a great deal of work done on smoking and lung cancer. And out of that milieu, Sir Austin Hill came up with the best-known criteria or guidelines in 1965. He never used the word criteria, by the way. Criteria sound like absolutes. Guidelines are more flexible. So here are some of Hill's criteria or guidelines. Maybe better, strength of, strength of association. How strong the association is. Why does that help us understand? Well, because there are a lot of biases out there, which we'll discuss. And the stronger the association, the less likely those biases can entirely explain a way in association. Consistency. Although there, the, the counterargument, and it's important to note that weak associations, true weak associations do exist. Consistency. If you see an association between smoking and lung cancer across populations using different population, different study designs, different regions, that gives you some confidence that this is a true causal association. However, it could be noted that this is not an absolute consistency because some populations may not have cofactors that are necessary for this association to be shown. Specificity of the association was more of an infectious disease epidemiology. For example, if you isolate HIV from somebody and, you know, it's, it's sort of unique to people with the syndrome. But in chronic disease epidemiology, for example, smoking, since we use that example. As you know, smoking can cause different kinds of cancer, different outcomes, heart disease, osteoporosis. There's a lot of emphasis, and there's a lot of outcomes. Specificity, even Bradford Hill said, was weak, especially with chronic diseases. Temporal relationship, that is the only one that's really a criteria. The cause must precede the outcome. If the outcome precedes the cause, it's not a cause. Or punitive cause, it's not a cause. Biological gradient is a fancy way of saying dose response. If you smoke more, does your risk go up? If you smoke even more, does your risk go up even more? That gives you a clue that there might be a relationship. Although, it could be argued that this is not a criteria because the more you smoke, the more of a confounder you may also be experiencing as well. So we'll talk about confounding. Biologic plausibility. Does the association make sense biologically? It's limited by what we know now. Something that doesn't make sense now may make much more sense later. So that is a limitation. But if you can say, well, we know that cigarette smoke enters the lungs. We know that it damages the tissue. We know that this damage is related to reproduction errors that ultimately lead to cancerous changes. That helps us believe in the causality of the association. Coherence is one of the weaker ones. It's just saying, okay, we know that people who, let's say, is it coherent with people who live in highly polluted areas? They also have lung cancer. It's just basically coherent with other things we know about other exposure, about the natural history of disease. Experiment, have there been any experiments? Even if you can't experiment in humans, can you, did you find an animal model that you can justify that has some relevance to humans? An analogy is also weak. But if, if, if we know thalidomide caused this birth defect with some similar drug, is it more easy to accept that some similar type of drug would cause a birth defect? So these criteria are not to be viewed as criteria. And Hill said that himself. But they're guides. They're guides for causal thinking. So sufficient causes precede the disease. I mean, we can look at, at sufficient versus necessary. I mean, we can look at sufficient versus necessary as definitions. It's good to know going forward. Sufficient cause precede the disease. If the cause is present, the disease always occurs. Necessary cause precedes the disease, of course. And if the cause is absent, the disease cannot occur. For example, being struck by lightning. A necessary cause would be a storm with lightning. Because if there is no storm with lightning, you can't be struck by lightning. So that's a necessary cause. But that's not sufficient in and of itself. For example, you may be under shelter. Even if there is a necessary cause, like lightning, a storm with lightning, it may not be sufficient to cause the outcome, which is being struck by it. There needs to be a group of causes that working together becomes sufficient. For example, there is a storm with lightning because that's necessary. You happen to be outside and you happen to be wearing, you happen to be out in the open where you can be struck by lightning. So at some point, these exposures group together along with whatever is necessary to create something that's sufficient. So as being out on the golf course during a lightning storm, near a tree on a mountain, wearing spiky shoes, is that enough? Is that sufficient to get struck by lightning? Yes, it is. But without the necessary cause, a lightning storm, you're not going to get struck by lightning. So associations between exposures and outcomes identified in observational studies may or not be causal. And you could say the same for experimental studies. There is need to pay attention to valid assessments, a valid assessment of exposure and outcome in order to think about causality. So reliability, validity, which we can break down into external validity, internal validity, and the three concepts we will look at momentarily, bias, confounding, and chance. Confounding is a type of bias. A systematic error, a distortion of the truth. Chance is random error. So validity suggests that a measure actually measures what it is expected to measure. So I've used the word measure three times. Suggest that a measure actually measures what it is expected or purported to measure. Should be accurate, free of systemic error, systematic error bias. And precise, which is minimal variation or repeatability. The degree to which a measurement or study reaches a correct conclusion. Are your conclusions valid? Two types of validity, internal and external. Perhaps the most important, internal validity. See extent to which the results of the study accurately reflect the true situation of the study population. Is the conclusion you made about your own study population correct? Or was it distorted? Was it distorted by bias? Or was it so small, or for whatever reason, chance gave you the wrong answer? It's very important because you're making a conclusion about your own study population. Chance is the probability that an observed association occurred unpredictably, without discernible human intention or observable cause. It happened by chance. And of course, sample size is a part of that. And you know, if you ask five people who they're voting for president, that's not a good poll because it's possible to get all kinds of variation. If you ask 5,000 people, that variation will be reduced considerably. So bias is a systemic or systematic error in a study which leads to an incorrect estimate of the association between exposure and disease. And confounding is a bias due to the influence of other variables in a study which leads to an incorrect estimate of the association between exposure and disease. This is what we talked about when we talked about randomization. Why you're trying to distribute other factors that might be influencing disease equally between the treatment group and the placebo group, for example. In an observational study, this is not possible. You're not randomizing, obviously. People smoke and drink coffee at the same time because they like a smoke after their coffee. I'm using that as an example, and perhaps will continue to do so. People may be more inclined to smoke if they drink coffee. Doesn't mean you have to smoke if you drink coffee. But it means it's more likely. There are more, you know, these things are associated with each other. So we'll talk about confounding momentarily. External validity is also called generalizability. The extent to which the results of a study are applicable to broader populations. For example, do the study results apply to other patients or other people, other parts of the country, other genders, other age groups? So you, you know, the ways to try to do this is represent, you get a representative sample, try to have a high participation rate when you do, and try to give people an equal chance to participate in the study. So inference is made back to the population. Can you do that? That's the question. Can you infer back to the population? If these are highly motivated volunteers or particularly healthy or particularly unhealthy, you may have trouble generalizing back to the population. But even if you can generalize to your very unique study population, does it apply to a different population? And that's always a question to ask. So random error, chance as opposed to systematic error. That part of our experience that we cannot predict, as Roethlisberger-Greeland said, usually more easily conceptualized as sampling variability and can be influenced by sample size, as I mentioned earlier. And that's where the confidence interval. Confidence intervals that we talked about before do not interpret bias. They do not, they can be influenced by bias. They do not measure bias. They're only measuring random error. They're only measuring the role of chance, the possible role of chance. So a confidence interval that's suggestive of an association doesn't mean that that association wasn't a product of bias. It merely talks about chance. You must deal with bias separately. Random error can be problematic, but the influence can be reduced by increasing sample size and improving the precision of your instrument. Whether it's a blood pressure measurement or dietary measurement, always try to improve the precision of that instrument. The probability of an observation occurring by chance can be quantified. For example, you've seen p-values or confidence intervals. These do not speak to systematic error or bias. So bias, any systematic or systemic error, not random, in a study which leads to an incorrect estimate of the association between exposure and disease or outcome. In other words, you get the wrong answer. So bias is a systematic error that results in an incorrect, invalid estimate of the measure of association, whether it's odds ratio, the rate ratio, the risk ratio. So bias can create spurious association where there is none. It can mask an association where there is one. Bias is primarily introduced by investigator or study participants. And obviously, it does not mean that the investigator's prejudiced. Different term. Can occur in all study types. And that's why even in an experimental study, you must assess the possibility of bias. It occurs in the design and conduct of a study. It can be evaluated, but not necessarily fixed in the analysis phase. Three main types are selection, information, and confounding. So let's go through those. Let's go through those. So first of all, let's talk about the direction. People talk about bias toward the null. What do they mean by that? Here you see in the upper part a null value, an observed value, and a true value. So the true value is what we wanted to have and what we should have had if we did everything correctly. But we were biased to a degree that suggests a weaker association. Our observed association is closer to the null. It's weaker than the true association. So we say that the bias is toward the null. Bias away from the null. That's when we take, look at the part on the right, observed two. You have a true value which is already above the null. And you're saying it's even higher above the null. It's even more extreme above the null. That's away from the null. Then on the left side, you have something that's further from the null, but it's actually in the opposite direction. Here, you're going from a true association that's positive or above the null to one that you're actually saying it's negative. So you might say it's away from the null. But in this case, I would actually say that it's what we call a switch-over bias. It's actually changing direction. At that point, it doesn't matter as much whether it's how much away from the null. So selection bias, again, refusals, for example, exclusions, non-participants. You end up in a case control study selecting controls that don't represent the underlying source population. They're different. They have a different exposure experience. That's selection bias. And that can come from failure to enumerate the entire population when you're selecting controls in a case control study. In a cohort study, you might have people leave your cohort. And if that's related to their exposure and their outcome, that's selection bias. They're selectively selecting themselves out of your cohort study during follow-up. And that's hopefully something to be avoided. Information bias is different. It's a different type of bias. It comes from the faulty information. Like an interviewer bias is an example where the interviewer probes too much because they know the exposure of the person that they're probing. Or they probe differently. Or they color the information with their own with their own efforts in some way or differential efforts. Recall bias, you've probably heard of it. It's when a group of people, this is typical of case control studies, where you're afraid that the cases might recall their exposures differently. They're trying to explain why they have the disease. They have more motivation or more guilt or whatever that results in them recalling their exposures more or less accurately than the control group does. And misclassification of exposure and outcome. Well, if you have a faulty measure, like a broken steganomometer, your measures of blood pressure will be out of whack and your results will be out of whack. So that's an example of misclassification of exposure. And misclassification can be differential or non-differential. An example of non-differential, if this poor blood pressure measurement is the same out of whack with exposed and unexposed people in a cohort study. On the other hand, that's non-differential. And that's likely to lead to bias toward the null. On the other hand, if the steganomometer is set up differently with exposed people, if the exposure is obesity or girth and it has a different measure based on exposure, that becomes a differential misclassification. And that can drive the results in either direction, toward the null or away from the null. Now, again, some of this seems like it's repetitious. But in the cohort study, systematic error, selection bias, is that which occurs in the process of identifying or retaining study populations. And identifying is actually a case control study. Do they represent the underlying source population? Or in a cohort study, retaining, are the people leaving my study, are they doing so in a way that is selective? Are they, is it related to their exposure and their disease? What would have been their disease outcome? The error that occurs when losses to follow-up are, this sentence is not correct, not independent of exposure and outcome in cohort study, not independent of exposure and outcome. Error due to systematic differences between those selected for study versus those not selected for study, case control. Again, are we selecting people who represent the source population? The population that gave rise to those same cases that we're comparing them with? If not, we have selection bias. Well, in a cohort study, you need to minimize losses to follow-up. That's probably the biggest thing that you can do. In a case control study, the best thing to do there is to try to select a group of controls as representative as possible. And again, a high participation rate is optimal that represent the underlying source population. And to understand, to the best of your ability, what the population and who they are that gave rise to your cases. It's difficult when you go to certain referring hospitals, for example. Now, are these people from out of town? Or they, it's hard to always know. These are the kind of things that plague case control studies. And yet, they're very useful tools. It's just a question of understanding the limitations and dealing with them, not dismissing the case control study. When controls do not reflect the population that gave rise to the cases, you have selection bias. The goal is to select controls and cases independent of the exposure status. If you're going for hospitalized controls, for example, or hospitalized cases, and you're looking at, let's say, diabetes and pneumonia, and diabetics are more likely to be hospitalized, you're, by going only to the hospitals, you're selecting cases that are more likely to be exposed. And that's not independent of the exposure. That's just one example. There are many. So a thing to ask is, do controls in the study have a higher or lower prevalence of exposure than controls not selected for the study? And importantly, are these controls represented? Are we, do we understand the source population that gave rise to the cases? Because that's what the controls are supposed to represent. So more on selection bias in case control studies. It occurs when controls or cases are more likely or less likely to be included in a study if they have been exposed. Inclusion of the study is not independent of exposure. And that's going to bias the results of your association. That's internal validity issues. It will incorrectly, the odds ratio will incorrectly represent the relationship between exposure and disease. That's why I said internal validity is perhaps the most important. Because for your own population, if you get the right answer, it may or may not be generalizable to other populations, but you got the right answer for your population. With internal validity issues, you don't even get the right answer for your own population. So more on information bias. An error that arises from systematic differences in the way information on exposure or disease is obtained from the study groups results in participants who are incorrectly classified as either exposed or unexposed or as diseased or non-diseased. It occurs after the subjects have entered the study. So I've mentioned recall bias, interviewer bias, and non-differential and differential misclassification. So this is essentially repeating what we said earlier. Recall bias, people with disease remember or report exposures differently than those without disease. It can result in over or underestimation of the measure of association. For example, if you are interviewing women who've given birth to a child with a birth defect and you ask them to think carefully about what supplements they took, what drugs they took, they may be much more motivated than a woman who had a perfectly healthy, no-birth defects outcome to remember such exposures. And that is why some studies will actually look at controls who have some outcome, some outcome that might cause them to remember as vividly or as, you know, with high motivation, but one that's not related to the exposure of interest. So use controls who are themselves sick if you can find one that's not related to the exposure. If you're looking at lung cancer, you don't want controls who have bladder cancer because they're both caused by smoking, for example. So it's a tricky thing. You've got to find one who's not, who's got an outcome that maybe equalizes them in their motivation to recall, but it's not related to the exposure of interest. Using standardized questionnaires. Using standardized questionnaires helps to get complete information and to the extent that the subject does not know the study hypothesis. Like with lung cancer and smoking, you're going to know, but on some cases that, now masking them to the study hypothesis is maybe feasible, maybe it's not, but it's something that you can consider. And it may or may not be ethical as well. So with interviewer bias, systematic differences in soliciting, recording, interpreting information. If you know that a case of lung cancer, if you believe that if you're interviewing a case of lung cancer, you might ask more rigorously about their smoking history than you would for a control who doesn't have it. In a follow-up study, you may be, just like if you know someone's a smoker, you may look extra hard and ask extra questions if your outcome is emphysema than someone who you know doesn't smoke. You can mask interviewers to study hypothesis. That's not always feasible. But using standardized questionnaires, standardized methods is good, always, almost always. And use biomarkers, like if you're looking at smoking as an exposure. Maybe you need to look at blood ketamine levels or some other measure to validate the information that you get from people. So misclassification resulting from inaccurate measurement or classification. For example, if you are more likely to follow up a smoker for emphysema, that means you are less likely to catch emphysema in nonsmokers. Those nonsmokers, or anybody who has emphysema but is not categorized as having emphysema, that's a misclassification. In this case, you've got a differential, you've got differential misclassification. You're looking at smokers more, you're less likely to misclassify a smoker as not having emphysema as you would a nonsmoker. But if, whatever, it could be that the test itself, that you're referring everyone, but the test itself is faulty, it's probably going to be non-differential. It doesn't know if you smoke or not. It's just a bad machine. That's non-differential misclassification. So in this case, they're independent of exposure if they're non-differential. And they're more likely to lead to bias toward the null. But be aware of the fact that if there is non-differential misclassification in your confounding variable, which we'll talk about shortly, that could lead to bias away or toward the null. Because you are not controlling for confounding, whichever direction it's going. You are not controlling for it properly if you're not measuring it properly, if there's misclassification. Now, in a case control study, if cases and controls have an equal trouble remembering how many carrots they ate over the past year, that's non-differential. If it's more likely that a case will remember or less likely than a control, that's differential. Again, a solution is to use standardized measures, use multiple measurements if necessary. If you know that one is more valid than another measure, use that one. For differential misclassification, as I just mentioned, the direction of the bias can go, it can go in either direction. And it can be differential misclassification of exposure in cases versus controls. By the way, is recall bias differential or non-differential misclassification? You're right, it's differential misclassification. Cases are remembering differently from controls. In a cohort study, you might be classifying disease differently based on exposure. That's differential. Or it may be misclassified regardless of exposure. That's non-differential misclassification. So now, we're going to talk about confounding, and we are one hour from our last break. So I'm wondering if we could take another five-minute break for, you know, so that you can stretch your legs, or whatever you need to do. How was that?
That would be a great idea. Thank you.
Okay.
All righty. We'll see you in a bit.
Thank you.
Dr. Carey, when you're ready to get started again, we do have just a couple of quick questions on the previous content.
Sure, please.
Are you ready now, or do you want to?
Oh, no, I'm fine.
You're good? Okay. All right. One question to clarify was, can attributable risk be calculated in case control? Or are they mostly meant for cohort studies?
They're mostly meant for cohort studies. There, I actually did calculate attributable risk in the case control study. But it was the kind of study I told you, which was very rare. And that's a study where you can get risks. Attributable risk requires that you calculate risk. And the only case control study where you can calculate risk is one in which you have, like we did, an entire, a very, very clear population that you are, you know, capturing all the cases that occur in that population. For example, I did mine in Sweden. We had all cases that occurred in Sweden. We knew exactly how many people lived in Sweden at the time, and we were able to estimate risks. And through that, risk differences are attributable risk. But in general, no. Case control study cannot generate risks and therefore cannot generate estimates of risk difference. So it's really, it's really a cohort study that can do that.
Okay, thank you. And then one clarifying question. In the Crib death example, does the data come from a case control study or something else?
That would be a follow-up study. We're talking about risks again. So it would be, by the way, a follow-up study or longitudinal study is often a synonym for a cohort study.
Great. Thank you very much. That was all the questions that we had submitted at this point.
Great. So shall we continue at this point?
I believe so.
Great, okay. So confounding. We've mentioned it a few times, and we'll try to clarify further. It's a mixing of effects. The association between exposure and disease is distorted because it is mixed with the effects of another factor that is associated with the disease. So the example I think I tried to give earlier was the relationship, well, I didn't actually try to do this, but now I'm going to put something together from what I said earlier. I said, what if smokers and coffee, what if smoking and coffee drinking goes together? Certainly was true at one time. Doesn't mean everyone who smokes drinks coffee or everyone who drinks coffee smokes, but there's a statistical association in the population. So if coffee drinkers are more likely to smoke cigarettes, what would happen if you looked at the relationship between coffee consumption and lung cancer risk? And you did not even account for smoking? You would see that the more you drank coffee, or if you drank coffee, and certainly the more you drank coffee, the higher your risk of lung cancer. And you might be tempted to assume that coffee causes lung cancer. When in fact, it's the smoking that causes lung cancer, and it's the fact that coffee drinkers are more likely to be smokers. So that is an example of a mixing of effects. It's an example of attributing to coffee drinking what is actually being done by smoking. So the result of confounding is to distort the true association toward the null or away from the null. In this case, coffee drinking has no association. So by not controlling for confounding by smoking, it's distortion away from the null. It makes coffee drinking look bad. So there are three main criteria for a variable to be a confounder. The variable must be an independent predictor of disease. Does smoking meet that definition? If we're looking at coffee and lung cancer, does smoking as a potential confounder, does it, is it an independent predictor of disease, which is lung cancer? The answer is yes. The variable must be associated or correlated with the exposure. Well, I asked you to believe in that association. So the answer is yes. The variable must not be an intermediate link in the causal chain between exposure and outcome. What do we mean by that? Well, if you're looking at diet, you know, high-fat diet and heart disease, well, LDL cholesterol level in the blood is certainly related to the exposure and the outcome. But it's part of the mechanism by which the high-fat diet causes the heart disease. If something is a mechanism, if it's in the causal chain, it is part of the cause. It's not a confounder. So that's why we have this third criteria, third criterion. The variable must not be an intermediate link in the causal chain between exposure and outcome. Is smoking in the causal chain between coffee consumption and lung cancer? Well, coffee does not act, and we know this from many diseases, through caffeine and coffee. It doesn't do that. It's just an association. It's not part of the causal mechanism. So yes, smoking meets all three of these criteria, and we might conclude that it's a confounder. So is smoking a confounder in the association between coffee consumption and lung cancer? Well, this is a diagram of those three. If coffee consumption, or the confounder in this case, which is smoking, lay in the causal pathway, you'd see an arrow that goes directly from E to C to D, but it doesn't. It's associated with coffee drinking, it's associated with smoking. It's not in the causal chain. You see all three criteria here. You see E correlated, or exposure correlated with exposure. In other words, coffee and smoking. You see an independent risk coming from smoking to the disease, and you see that it's not in the causal chain. So this is a common diagram. But you see, in this case, coffee consumption is acting through cigarette smoking. And there may be some residual association, but probably, if you control for smoking, you'll probably find that there's no association between coffee consumption and lung cancer. In an experimental design, you still have opportunities for confounding. First of all, if you don't randomize. Then the distribution of other factors, like confounding factors, risk factors that are possibly related to this. Well, that's going to be different, or it has the possibility of being different. Randomization is intended to sort of equally distribute confounders, known and unknown, between groups. And yes, residual confounding after randomization. And that's why we said, check, you know, the first table or the first analysis you do is to check to see that the randomization worked. And generally speaking, the larger the sample size, the more it's going to work, but there's no guarantee. Check. In a cohort and case control studies, when comparison groups differ by subject characteristics, when risk factors other than exposure are distributed differently between exposed and unexposed, like exposed people, if you're looking at coffee as an exposure, more likely to smoke. And residual confounding. What if you control for smoking? And I mentioned this earlier. What if you control for smoking, but you don't measure it accurately? Well, you're not fully controlling for smoking. You're only controlling for a confounder to the extent that you measure it accurately. So the direction for this type of misclassification can go either way. It depends on how smoking has come. is, how your confounding variable is confounding, and which direction is confounding, the association between exposure and disease. So in the design phase, you can randomize, you know, with sufficient sample size, randomization is likely to control for both known and unknown confounders, but it's not guaranteed. Restriction, you could say, okay, there's no way we can measure smoking carefully enough, we're going to restrict this to nonsmokers. Certainly, smoking can't vary between our exposure groups if nobody smokes. And matching, matching is not, however, so much a control for confounding. It's thought of in some groups as this, but if you read Rothman and Greenland, for example, it's more of a way to maximize efficiency. It does not by itself control for confounding. That's important to know about matching. In the analysis, you could do standardization, which we tried to give you an example, age standardization, to make fair comparisons between populations, and that's not feasible when you have a lot of variables that you want to standardize for. Again, you can restrict in the analysis, even though you have information on smokers, you can say, for this analysis, we're looking at nonsmokers. If you're not sure, for example, in the relationship between alcohol consumption and breast cancer, or between smoking and breast cancer, you may want to absolutely, since you don't necessarily know you're going to get alcohol information accurately enough to control for it properly, you simply restrict your analysis to non-drinkers. So that's what restriction is about. Stratified analyses, it's a way of eliminating variation in the confounding factor. It's feasible with a small number of variables, it's like standardization in that sense. You could say, okay, let's look at the relationship between coffee and lung cancer, and nonsmokers and smokers separately. I mean, you're stratifying by smoking, but the minute you have more than one variable to stratify on, it becomes unwieldy. That's why most of us use multivariate analysis, because it enables us to control for several potential confounders simultaneously. Be aware of the fact, though, that if you have a small number of outcomes, a small number, small sample size, small number of cases, you can't put an indefinite amount of variables in the model. So now we're on to effect modification, not confounding, but the stratification process is involved as well, sometimes called interaction. So the strength of the association between exposure and disease differs according to the level of another variable. So it's modification of the relationship between exposure and the disease by a variable, therefore effect modification. If the association changes according to the level of that variable, that effect modifying variable, then effect modification is present. So here's an example of effect modification. We're looking at, let's say, antioxidant intake and esophageal squamous cell carcinoma. And we find, in this made-up example, that the risk ratio is higher, in other words, high antioxidant intake is more beneficial. It has a stronger inverse odds ratio in smokers and nonsmokers. Okay, so we see that there's a difference in the results based on whether you're a smoker or not. So smoking is an effect modifier. Now, when you do affect modification, when you see effect modification, unfortunately, you have to explain it. I mean, you can't report things and not explain them. In this case, I would say smokers have more oxidative stress, therefore antioxidants are more likely to have something to work on. They have more antioxidant potential in people who have oxidative stress. That would be my impromptu explanation for this effect modification. Another example, Aspirin and Rye syndrome. You see an association in youth, but not adults. That's effect modification. So if you're going to study it, and study the causes of it, you may want to look at young people. Now we're going to talk about screening. So we went basically affect modif, confounding, a little bit more in-depth, effect modification. Hopefully you understand that when you have effect modification, it's important to report it and explain it, especially if it's not something, if it's something that you had some reason for suspecting. And that trumps confounding, that's a very important point. You don't need to control for confounding by a factor, if you're already stratifying on it and reporting the results separately. That takes precedence, because to try to combine them into a single measure, even controlling for confounding by that factor, and a factor can both confound and modify an association, you're getting some sort of mix between two separate effects that don't really apply to either one of those two groups or more. So effect modification is more important to take care of than confounding, if both are present. So now screening. Screening is the application of one or more tests to determine those likely to have the disease or a condition from those unlikely to have the disease. It's a two-step process, screening followed by diagnosis. The diagnostic process is more time-consuming and more expensive. If it weren't, you wouldn't need a screening test. So people are screened, they're either screened positive or screened negative. If they screen negative, they go back into the pool of people awaiting for the next appropriate time to be screened. If they're positive, they go for a diagnostic test, and that diagnostic test is the gold standard against which we judge our screening test. So at that point, you still can test, even though you've tested positive, you can still be diagnosed as not having the disease, so you're a false negative. You go back into the pool again, and you'll get screened again at a later date. If you do have the disease, then you go for treatment. At that point, you've tested positive, and you've got a diagnostic test positive, you get treatment at that point. So it's a two-step process. Some examples, mammography for breast cancer, fecal occult blood test for colon cancer, pap smear for cervical cancer, x-ray for lung cancer. Some of these are better than others. Some of these are better than others. Just because it's a screening test we use, at some point, you need to evaluate whether that screening actually lowers the mortality or morbidity from a certain condition. And that's why some of the tests that you see here have been considered controversial over time. Some not, some not. You know, we still use blood pressure, we still rely on blood pressure as a measure of hypertension, or blood sugars as a measure of diabetes. Some more controversial prostate-specific antigen, for example, and prostate cancer. So screening occurs at a point where you have subclinical disease. If you're already having symptoms, likely you don't need to be screened for it, you're going to be going into your doctor and get diagnosed with it. So there's a point in the natural history of disease, and this is why natural history of disease is good to understand in public health and epidemiology, and this is the point where screening makes sense. Primary prevention is when you prevent the onset, the biological onset, don't smoke. That's a way for primary prevention, you know, don't start smoking. Secondary prevention is where you capture a disease in an early stage, presumably because capturing it in an early stage leads to a better outcome. And tertiary prevention is, you know, it's helping ameliorate the signs and symptoms and livability of someone who's already been diagnosed. So secondary prevention is where screening occurs. Screening is not error-free. Screening tests will fail to identify some individuals with the disease, false negatives, and falsely identify some without disease as needing further testing, false positives. Accuracy. Sensitivity and specificity measure the ability of a test to correctly identify disease and non-disease people, respectively. Sensitivity refers to the proportion of people with the disease who test positive. Specificity refers to the proportion of people without the disease who test negative. A test with poor sensitivity will miss people who have the disease, and a test with poor specificity will falsely identify healthy people as diseased. The way to think about it, well, let's see if we have, so the gold standard is needed to assess those classified as test positive or test negative, and that's the diagnostic test I showed you before. So sensitivity, this slide may not be entirely legible, but this formula says that the probability of testing positive, if the disease is truly present. So in this case, we're looking at a diagram with people who have disease, so they're disease-positive, and some of those are correctly testing positive, they're the A-cell, and incorrectly testing negative, they're the C-cell. So A plus C is all the diseased people. So A, the number of people who test positive divided by all people with the disease, is the sensitivity. And we hope for a perfect sensitivity. That means, imagine 100 people with the disease, and you do your screening test. The number of people, the percentage of people who test positive, that's your sensitivity, and we want it to be 100% if possible. We don't want false negatives. Specificity, the probability of screening negative, if the disease is truly absent. So here you look at the right-hand column, B and D, together, they're all the non-disease people, but the ones who correctly test negative are the people in cell D. So imagine 100 people without the disease, and you give them the screening test. The specificity is the percentage of people in that group who test negative, like they should, and you want specificity to be maximal as well. But I think of, when I think of sensitivity, I think of a group of people with the disease. When I think of specificity, I think of a group of people without the disease. Now, there's a relationship, there's a trade-off between sensitivity and specificity. And by lowering the criterion of positive results and an increased sensitivity, you can do that, but at the expense of decreased specificity, this is where the trade-offs occur. And ultimately, the goal is to have a high sensitivity and high specificity, but this is often not possible or feasible. And I'm going to give you a quick example, where we're looking at fasting, especially when you have overlapping populations. Now, you have a group of normal people, and what we say, what we mean by normal here is not with diabetes, that's what we mean. And we have a group of diabetics, and as you see, the group is overlapping to some extent. Now, we can have a fasting serum glucose level in terms of milligrams per deciliter, and which of these cutoffs increases or maximizes sensitivity? And which of these cutoffs maximizes specificity? Now, that's a tricky question, and I'm not going to give you enough time, if you're confused by that, to figure it out. So I apologize, but you can go back and look at this. But the way to look at it is, again, as I mentioned, when you think of sensitivity, think about the diseased people. So look at the curve on the right with the diabetics. How do we make sure that most of those diabetics, or the maximum number of diabetics, test positive? It's actually cut off number one, 110. And if we could even lower it further, we would maximize, we would increase our sensitivity. More of those diabetics would be told by our screening test that they have diabetes. But what's happening to our specificity? You'll see, the more we increase sensitivity, the more we decrease specificity, the more of the normal people, or the non-diabetics, are being told falsely that they have diabetes. So perhaps something in the middle, like, you know, something that sort of maximizes, optimizes specificity and sensitivity would be needed, something that accounts for the trade-off nature of sensitivity and specificity. Performance yield, positive predictive value. It's a tricky concept. It's not as intuitive as sensitivity and specificity. Individuals with a positive screening test results will also test positive on the diagnostic test. So imagine, this is the way I can imagine, negative predictive value, individuals with negative screening test results are actually free of disease. And I tend to think of positive predictive value more than negative predictive value. So positive predictive value, the way to look at it perhaps, and make something up, is pretend you're the head of a diagnostic laboratory, who has to do an expensive diagnostic test on all the people who test positive. Now, what if out of every 100 people who come to your lab to get, let's say, an x-ray or something that's even more invasive, what if two out of 100 actually end up having the disease? Now, you could say, that's great, that I'd only have to tell two out of 100 people that they have this disease. But from another point of view, that's not very good. That means 98 out of 100 people are being exposed to unnecessary testing, expensive, in some cases risky testing, whether it's a biopsy or an x-ray. So positive predictive value should also be maximized. That means the people who do test positive should have the disease. And so in this case, the way to calculate it, positive predictive value, is of all people who test positive, it's sort of the opposite of sensitivity, of all people who test positives, which is A plus B, how many actually have the disease, which is A? So the formula for positive predictive value, instead of sensitivity, which is A over A plus C, positive predictive value is A over A plus B. And you can see the formula for negative predictive value as well. However, unlike sensitivity and specificity, which are qualities of the test itself, they're inherent qualities of the test itself, positive predictive value depends also on the population prevalence of disease. Imagine a population with no disease, and you instituted a screening test, every positive would be a false positive. Your positive predictive value would be zero, regardless of the sensitivity and specificity. Now, it's good to have, the positive predictive value does increase with increasing sensitivity and specificity, but also population prevalence. Imagine a population where everyone has the disease. All positive tests will be true diseased people for a positive predictive value of So the positive predict, so the sensitivity and specificity are important considerations, they're inherent qualities of the test, but also understanding the disease prevalence will help you decide whether this test is appropriate for this population, because a poor positive predictive value, you know, like you said, imagine yourself as the head of a laboratory that does this diagnostic testing. This would not be good to see two out of every 100 people actually have the disease. 98% exposed to the cost and expense and risk of your diagnostic test unnecessarily. So higher sensitivity and specificity influence positive predictive value and prevalence of the disease in the population as well. So that is the end of my lecture. Perhaps you have questions about sensitivity, specificity, positive predictive value. Perhaps you have questions about confounding, and how it can affect every study design that we have. Perhaps you have another question?
Dr. Terry, we do have a few questions here. The first was, please, can you clarify that matching does not control for a confounding?
Well, that's tricky, but I would definitely like you to look into that. When you match, remember, you are actually, you know, people say, or I've said, and books will tell you, not to select cases and controls based on exposure, and should be independent of exposure. When you're matching, you are actually selecting based on exposure, and you're actually creating confounding, and that's why you need to do a special analysis that controls for that confounding. So it's really not considered a way to control for confounding, it rather introduces confounding. But if you have a very unequal distribution of cofactors, by matching, you make your analyses more efficient. And Rothman talks about this in his book with Greenland, and, you know, it's actually a very terse conversation, but it's worth thinking about and reading about further.
Okay, thank you. Please clarify if restriction can also be done at the study design phase?
Absolutely, but realize, well, it's a choice. You can say, for example, that example I gave you about alcohol consumption possibly confounding the association between smoking and breast cancer, and this was looked at by Richard Dahl and colleague. and breast cancer, and this was looked at by Richard Dahl and colleagues in a large 53 case control studies or 53 pool studies. They restricted to non-drinkers because they were afraid that the alcohol consumption was not measured properly would make smoking look like it caused breast cancer when in fact it didn't. Residual confounding, you can't capture the measure properly, you can't control for it. Now, you can restrict at the beginning of the study and say, we don't want any alcohol drinkers in this study, period. And that will give you a larger sample size of non-drinkers, if that's your goal. However, restricting in the analysis has one advantage to that, to restricting in the design phase, and that is that the next hypothesis that comes along, you may want that alcohol variable. See what I mean? Another time you might want to restrict in a design stage is if you know you're not going to get enough people. For example, if it's a, it's a special group of people, you know, like certain types of workers and females are very rare, you might say, well, you know, we're just not going to recruit females, and they don't mean it to be sexist. They mean, we're not going to get enough to analyze separately. And there may be some differences by, and we're not going to even be able to look at that. So we're going to restrict out female. We're going to restrict to males. And it, and it sounds like it's a cruel thing to do or maybe, but it's not. It's, if you don't, if you can't analyze something and it makes no sense to collect, you restrict at that stage. But if it's something like alcohol consumption, which may be very important when you're looking at another hypothesis, then it's better to restrict in the analysis stage. I hope that answers your question.
Okay. What is the exact difference between effect modification and confounding?
Effect modification is saying that, wow, we think there, the true association between an exposure and an outcome is different based on the effect modifier. So, for example, the relationship between depression and suicide seems to be different in males and females. So it's a stronger relationship in males, and I'm sort of making this up, but there's, there's some literature on it. The point is, those are true associations. The gender may actually change the nature of the relationship. That's what it implies. It's not implying that there's a bias. It's implying that there are two separate relationships or different degrees of a relationship in two different groups. It says nothing about there being anything false about that. While confounding truly is a distortion, it's attributing to one variable what another variable's doing. In that case, you want to separate the effects so that you can look at the variable that you're looking at without the influence of the other variable. That's different from effect modification. Effect modification, you're assuming there's truly a difference in the association between depression and suicide between in males versus females. And if that's the case, it has implications for public health. You may need to treat males and females with depression differently. That's the truth. Confounding is not the truth. It's a mixing up of effects that distorts the truth. I hope that makes sense.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's any other questions, please enter them into the question box now. I will clarify that all of the slides and the webinar, actually recorded webinar session, will be archived on the NBPHU website. Right now, you can see the one that we've had of the series of five that we had earlier in the month is archived there already, the 2015. And this one will be also archived as well with the existing 2014. So that will be online. We do have one more question. If a test is applied in two regions and the sensitivity and specificity of that test differs in the two regions, what could account for this?
Okay. Well, that's a good question. Normally, when we look at something like a pregnancy test, we can publish the sensitivity and sensitivity levels because they're inherent qualities of the test. So normally, you don't think of sensitivity and specificity as varying between populations. Now, it's very possible that, I'll give you an example. There's a device called a vel scope which is designed to be used by dentists. It's got a special fluorescent frequency that's supposed to highlight precancerous changes in the oral mucosa better than, than the eye alone. So the dentist looking for oral cancer in your mouth, you know, it's got to be pretty obvious before they see it. Well, this light, the vel scope, perhaps they believe can capture, is more sensitive to changes, early changes, and can highlight them differently. Now, in different groups of people that, let's say, have different skin tone or skin color, this device may not work as well, or it may not highlight these changes as well. So there may be characteristics in the population that makes the test less sensitive, or, you know, it would have to do with something that blocks the action of this test from working the same way. Now, with a pregnancy test, they don't have separate groups of people that says, all right, the sensitivity is this in this group and that in that group, because there seems to be no difference in how the pregnancy test works. But that would account for it. I mean, that could account for it. That's an example of, from my own, you know, experience where we thought that the sensitivity and specificity may be different because of the different skin types that we had to deal with, with this illumination may be different. So that could be a quality of the population that changes the nature of the way the test works, and that does happen. But generally speaking, with most tests, they can actually publish the sensitivity and specificity, knowing fairly confidently that it's going to work the same way across populations. I hope that answers your question.
I think so. Currently, we don't have any other submitted questions. So at this time, I'd like to thank you, Dr. Terry, for your time and for your expertise sharing with us, and for all those who will be able to view the archived presentation online. And if there are any further questions, you can submit them to the NBPHU website, and we will do our best to answer them. Thank you so much, Dr. Terry, and good luck to all of those who will be taking the CPH exam. And I'd like to remind you that we will have three additional webinars, and you can register for those online at this time. Thank you so much.